Good evening. Welcome to Tuesday, August 27, 2019, regular Selectmen's meeting. All the Selectmen are here except for Selectman Pendigast, who is out on the road working, is the Town Manager, the Town Clerk, Town Assessor, Town Finance Director, as we have the Public Works from the stump, we have a transfer station.
Transfers.
Transfer Station. We have, we have Planning Board members here, we have lots of people. Please stand with me and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have minutes from our August 13 meeting. We have an approval.
The minutes is presented.
Second.
Go ahead.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. First public comment, first public comment, open, step to the podium, is state your name, address all questions, comments, curses to the board.
It's just because I got up here. Nicole Fecto, Wingate Lane, Burwick. I actually was coming to speak about the appointment of David Ross Lyons to the Planning Board. I'm the Vice Chair of the Planning Board, and if you don't know Dave, he has really shown a vested interest in being a member. He has come to the last few months' worth of meetings. He's studying the processes, he's familiar with all of our applications right now, and we don't usually get that much participation preemptively, so it's a breath of fresh air to have somebody that's so invested, because as you guys know, we're all very invested in our planning process, and that's all I wanted to say. Also, we're having a Planning Board meeting tomorrow night, a little workshop meeting at 6:30. Be there.
Step right up. I know what you can talk about.
I'm Hokey from the Transfer Station. This is just a last reminder of the Hazardous Waste Day, a week from this Saturday, on September 7, at the South Doric Making Facility on Route 4, where they have the school buses and stuff. I want to remind people not to bring the hazardous waste stuff to the Transfer Station, because they'll be taking it right back home again. And it'll be, like I said again, from 9:00 to 1:00, and you've got to be there by 9:00 and out of there by 1:00. And they don't want you getting out of your vehicle, they'll unload the stuff for you. So is there any questions?
Just one, Hokey. Is there, is there a limit to how much can be dropped off?
No. No limit.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, then. We'll see you next year.
I bet we'll see you before then.
I bet you will, too. Get that.
Have a good night. Any more public comment? There are none. We have no public hearing, is reports of committees, is BCTV, is I don't believe they have a report tonight. Oh, wait a minute, I hear a door opener. Oh, that was Hokey leaving. Is Invision Burwick, we have anybody from Invision Burwick that wants to speak?
Well, I don't have anything to say, but I'm here.
Well, I'll just comment a couple of things about the Invision Burwick, is we had the second concert this last Saturday. It was a huge success, in my opinion, as again, we had well over 200 people attending. It was a beautiful night, is everything went well, is BCTV was able to livestream it, which is a new first for us, too, is so, is I think, I think that we look forward to doing this a lot more next year. We have no department reports tonight, correct?
We can introduce our new Finance Director at this section, so she can go home.
Oh, come on. Go ahead.
Yeah. Lisa Vargas, she's our new Finance Director. She can just stand up, you don't have to come to the podium unless they have questions for you. You haven't met several of them, so. She comes from Lyman, she was there for a long period of time, and she's a breath of fresh air in our upstairs office, and she's jumped in feet-first, so we're very excited to have her here.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you for taking the job.
She says she's having fun, so it sounds like our last.
Right now, or?
She's, she's another, she's another one of those accountants that likes to have fun with numbers. I'm glad they do. Get all the, let's see.
There should be three for her.
Three, yep. Yep. All right, we'll take it a little bit out of order here, is we have to appoint Lisa to Deputy Tax Collector, Deputy Treasurer, and Finance Director without terms. Do I have a motion?
So a motion for each individual.
Just do all three, I'll fix it.
All right. So I move we appoint Lisa Vargas as the Deputy Tax Collector, Deputy Treasurer, and Finance Director without term.
Second. Any discussion?
Welcome aboard.
All those in favor? It's official now. All right.
Lisa, nice to meet you.
Is, well, we've already had one, no speaking out for David Ross Lyons. Is David, are you here? Step to the podium and introduce yourself, tell us why you're interested and a little bit of your background.
My name is David Ross Lyons, live on Dobson Road in Burwick. Moved to Burwick about five and a half years ago, and due to work constraints and life, I didn't really have a lot of time to devote to the community. Had some changes, and I have the availability, and I think the Planning Board's a good way to start, and a good way to shape, help shape the community I call home.
Questions of David?
No, thank you for taking the challenge.
Thanks.
What's your background?
I actually work in operations for a healthcare company, and I'm a part-owner of a home painting company, small business, based out of Burwick.
Very good. Is any further questions? Do I have a motion?
I move that we appoint David Ross Lyons to the Planning Board for a three-year term to expire, I don't know when.
December 31, 2022, and this is as an alternate.
2022.
Oh, as an alternate.
As an alternate, yes.
You all have copies under Tab 8.
Oh, thank you, Patty. My first day, sorry.
Is we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thanks for stepping forward, as we've been calling for volunteers for years now, and well, is the Planning Board tends to, you know, have, you know, pretty well-filled, we do get a lot of people for that, but is the, the alternates have a tendency to move up quickly and become full members, and we appreciate it. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take the other one out of order here, since it's only one, was Code Enforcement, Jennifer McCabe.
She is not here. She's Deputy Code Enforcement Officer right now, but we've decided to make some changes. Dan Vincent is going to spend less time, and he's going to be in the field doing just fieldwork for inspections, and Jen is gonna, she's completely certified through all the state, Dan has not finished his yet, so we're switching that around, giving him less time and giving her more time, and she's got very good people skills and good knowledge of what she used to have, so I recommend her to become a full-time code officer, part-time, but 25 hours a week. So, it's a busy office.
So moved.
Second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Great, thank you. She'll be at all your meetings.
Okay.
Yeah. So now, it's the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. This is without terms, is, is we have, we have a slate that we're going to go down through, is we have Alex Bovier, Jamie Blood, Nicole Fecto, Lisa Hustus, Rick Vanderburg, Derek Wright, White, and Tom Wright. Is we've been, another, another thing that we've been talking about for several weeks now, is the Comprehensive Plan, that these are the people that stepped forward to head it up, is, is this, looking at the list, does this, any of us have some spare time to donate to this, but it's an important thing. We are still looking for people to work with us on the Comprehensive Plan.
Jeremy Kasten is here for that also. I saw Nikki, but it wasn't on the agenda.
We'll get you next time around, okay? Is, we're not going to turn anybody down. Is, is any questions?
Just for the public record, what is the Steering Committee going to be doing?
Hopefully directing everybody else to do all the work. The Comprehensive Plan is a multifaceted thing, is it looks at economic development, is the heritage of the town, the makeup of the town, where we want the town to be, and is, is what we're going to be doing, we'll have, be having a series of meetings probably over the next year or so, we'll be doing some, some, getting groups together to discuss different things, we'll be having plenty of public hearings, I'm sure, is about what this is all about, and it is basically just to help guide where we want the town to be in the next, you know, 10, 15, 20 years. The current Comprehensive Plan, I think was in 1989, was when it was first adopted, it's been amended a couple of different times and added, too, is a lot of the things that are mentioned in there have been outdated with new technologies and things, so it's just more of bringing the town's vision forward. So, if you're volunteering to help, is, we'll welcome you.
I very well may be.
It's a good experience, it's a good process, so.
I intend to be here in 10 to 15 years, so it does affect me.
I hope to be. Any other questions? We can do this appointment as a slate, so is, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do you want to include Jeremy, and I'll just get the paperwork done?
Sure.
And then he can get started.
Yeah. I told you we weren't going to forget you. That was quick. As we remember, is motion is second, is.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. And thanks, everybody, is look forward to, you know, working through this.
And good luck.
And the room members.
Unfinished business, we have none listed that I know of. Is.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Jeremy, for that.
Is Town Managers Report.
The paving on Worcester Road, they'll be grinding it next week, and hopefully getting the base layer down right directly after that. Public Works has put in all the culverts, they've got one mid-cross culvert they have to do this week, which won't take them, take them a day to get it taken care of, and then Pine Hill, that project will start mid to later September, and they'll grind that as well, that's all completed with culverts, and get a two-inch base on that, and that should do it. And we're going to be doing the parking lot, the employee parking lot this year, we're going to rip out the stumps and just create more spaces. I think we were going to gain 15 more spaces with the design that the first study had, so that's a little bit less expensive than doing roads, but be a nice project to have under our belt.
When is that going to be done?
Sometime in September, mid-September. Let's see, the prime site is the Blue Sort Building, and they're in the process of hauling material out, and they should start doing the cleanup inside within the next month. The parking lot is also scheduled within this timeframe, and we expect everything to be done. The end date is 9/27. We had quite a few cars parking there, and we've moved them over to the prime site, Public Works went in and got rid of the brush and swept it and scraped it up so it was good for parking, and it seems to be being used. Union contracts, we finished with the Teamsters, and we're going to mediation. The only mediation we have in issues is wages, so I haven't got a date on that, but we hope to get it done before the end of September, if we can. And then September 25th, we start the police union contracts, three-year contract, and we're hoping that will go as well as the Teamsters did. That's all I have. Any questions?
That brings us to Accounts Payable. Account payable warrant 2007 from August 15, 2019, the amount of $177,781.09. Water warrant 007 from August 15, 2019, the amount of $44,402.32. Account payable warrant 2008 from August 22, 2019, the amount of $97,007.10. And we have a water warrant 008 from August 22, 2019, the amount of $369.54.
$396.
$396.
Nope, $396.54. My dyslexia here again. Is payroll warrant 2008 from August 22, 2019, the amount of $65,434.76. And a payroll warrant for August 29, 2019, payroll warrant 2009, for the amount of $55,574.68. As I'll make a motion, we pay our bills.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. That brings us to 2020 Tax Commitment.
Hey, good evening, everybody. My name is Paul McKinney. I wanted to go over the final reevaluation figures that we ended up with, so the 2019 final value increased over the 218 value by $73,984,400, 10% change in the town valuation. Residential properties went up about 8%, vacants went up 23%, manufactured homes went up about 1%, condominiums 14%, and commercial 22%. The assessment to sales ratio, where the, where we are compared to the market, is at 97.98%, with a COD of 8.14. The COD is our quality rating, tells us that all of our data is, is within, you know, 8% of the median, basically. And then the price-related differential is 1.006. The standards are, it has to be between 98 and 103. This indicates that we're not overvaluing the low-end properties or undervaluing the high-end properties. So hearing notices were mailed out on July 26. Taxpayers could either go online to schedule an appointment, call our office, and they had until July 20, that's not right. I think it was actually August 1 to sort of do that. We had a total of 65 scheduled hearings, some of those were, you know, that were held between July 29 and August 7. Some of those were phone hearings, where people couldn't make the appointment, so we returned a phone call. We did have several people that walked in as well, you know, as we were doing the hearings on the, in this room, so we did, you know, we took those people, we didn't refuse anybody. We've had a couple calls after that as well, so, that we've responded to. Most people were questioning the increase in their property value, of course, a lot of them were just interested in the process and how we develop the, you know, the values and where the, and an explanation of how the reevaluation worked. So that's basically on that.
Anything get particularly tense, or everybody, anybody particularly mad?
No, the, the ones that I thought would be tense would be the storage facilities, which went up quite a bit. We did have a couple sales of those, you know, the small storage facilities, and those went up probably as much as 100%, and I didn't get any feedback at all. I had a couple people call and ask questions, but that was about it. We had a couple, and the mobile home parks were the, were the other ones that went up quite a bit.
The parks themselves, not?
Yeah, not the individual homes, but the parks themselves. I'm sure it may flow down, you know, to the tenants, unfortunately, but looking at what the other mobile home parks' sales were in the area, we were way undervalued on them. So, we had, we've had, you know, sales in Dover, Epping, nothing in Southern Maine, but a lot locally within, you know, within New Hampshire, Southern New Hampshire, so. And I did get some response, but I mean, nothing that people, you know, were really concerned about, I guess, but.
They weren't willing to share their income statement.
They weren't willing to share their income statement, no. So, you know, that, those were the two biggest examples. There was, you know, some of the large taxpayers that had multiple properties, you know, those people came in and we responded. There was two low-income housing projects in town, they may be coming back in, you know, for an abatement, but they haven't said anything yet, and I've asked them for income, and, you know, we've yet to receive anything, so I just couldn't keep it open any longer to, you know, to respond to them, but we needed to get done with the commitment, so we may be hearing from them, but.
Of individual homeowners that came in, is, were, did most of, were most of, in the end, would most of them agree with the assessment, or was it changing?
Not necessarily agreed, but they were satisfied with the response that we, we didn't have anyone that really gave us the problem or objected, I mean, you know, they also have the abatement process, and we indicated that to them, but no, there was no one that was really overval, they just wanted to know why their value went up that much. We did make adjustments, you know, during the hearing process to bring some down, or, you know, we found some errors during that time period, we went out and inspected probably eight or 10 different properties as a result of the hearings, that we, you know, we didn't have inspected before, so. For the most part, I mean, you know, 60, what did I say, we had 65 hearings on three, you know, about 3,000 properties, I mean, it's not, that was pretty good.
Right.
Yep. All right, so fall on the commitment, you've got the memo, so I'll just kind of read from this, but on the spreadsheets, I've provided a comparison of just the prior year, as well as a comparison of numerous previous years of the tax rate calculation forms, and it also gave you a spreadsheet of the town's taxable value increase from 2018 to 19. The net valuation base increased by 10.85%. Spreadsheets will show that the, compared to the 2018-19 county taxes, county tax appropriations increased by 3.84%. Municipal appropriations increased by 20%. School and education appropriation increased by 5%. In total, the increase was 11.73%. State and other revenues are expected to increase by about 19% in total. So consequently, the next, the net tax dollars to be raised by local property taxes increased a little over 10%. On the, the spreadsheets that we fill out, gives us a range of what a tax rate can be, and it was between 1735 and 1820, allowing for the overlay that was, I think we need because of the revale and other things. We're looking to recommend a rate of 1753, which is a slight decrease from last year's rate. Are you willing to answer any questions, or?
The 1753, what is that in proportion to? Like.
We're, what do you mean, wasn't?
I mean, 1753 per $100 worth of value?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes, yes. The, the mill rate is .01753.
Okay.
Times whatever your assessment would be to, to come up with your taxes.
Right.
So that gives us an overlay of $142,611.
Okay.
And that overlay is to account for any abatements that we may get or anything, you know, from, from the revale. It's usually a little higher in a revale year than in a normal tax year.
And you think that, that's sufficient to cover us for, for eventuality?
Yeah, I think that's, yes, I think that's sufficient, yeah. And especially where we only got a small number of hearings, I mean, I don't anticipate a huge.
Sure.
Abatement.
Any further questions? Nope.
Just one, the 23% increase in vacant properties, that goes to just properties that are uninhabited? Or businesses that are empty, or?
Yeah, what I, I mean, when we did the reevaluation, we raised the land curve, the value of the average lot, you know, based on what the sales told us, so that was what everybody saw was the biggest percentage. Some of the home values actually decreased because of the, you know, depreciation, so that's why vacant land probably went up for everybody, but some people got a little bit of a break on their house because of depreciation for the last, the last reevaluation was done in 2006.
Yeah.
And we use those safe, we don't change any tables in the database from year to year, I mean, those stay the same until you do a full town-wide evaluation, and then those are reset based on what the sales indicate.
All right. Any further questions? Entertainer motion to.
They have to vote to approve the.
They have to vote to approve the.
Valuation, right?
Yes, the valuation first.
Valuation first.
Yeah.
And then the tax rate.
Then the tax rate.
Right.
And then.
Hang on to your hat.
All right.
And Patty has the forms, the warrants that need to be signed.
Tom Haslam.
Oh, Tom Haslam, okay.
So I would move that we accept the town reevaluation that was submitted by our Town Assessor, our Town Assessor, Paul McKinney.
Second.
Presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Okay.
Now we need a motion to accept the tax rate.
To set the tax rate, yeah.
Set the tax rate, and it's, it's been suggested that it be. Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, everyone.
You too.
Let's see, we have four signatures on this. Spirit of America Legislative Settlement?
Yeah, we expected to have a representative here. She had a, she may not, she worked at night.
Right.
So she may not have been able to get the time off.
Yeah.
And we had, we changed, kept changing the date on that.
So, yeah.
It was hard to get her here, but we'll make sure she's here and we, that's for, something from the legislature, recognizing Eleanor Murphy as a Spirit of America award, well-deserved.
And believe me, she's still talked about up there. They all know her very well.
Oh, yeah.
She's a, she's a real legend.
It's funny.
All right. Contingency fund request with time clock plus.
Yes, our new finance director is trying to...
Already spending money, huh?
Well, she's, these are, this is actually something that we talked about.
Right.
Maureen and I talked about probably my first year here. And basically, it's an upgrade in how we put time cards in. It's, you can do it at your computer, or you can use a card like we have, but if you do it, you can actually do it, you can get an app for your phone. And so if you're on the property and you haven't got to your computer yet, but you're working, you can log in and plug in your time, and it actually GPSes, it tells us where you are at that time. So it's pretty safe, pretty safe. What we, the cost is around $14,000, and what we're recommending is we're going to do half from the contingency if it's approved, and half from each department, because everybody, all employees use it, from police to public works, even the summer staff, this will be more accurate. Keeps it from people waiting at the time clock, I hate to say this, but for a certain specific time, they punch in, they get the extra quarter, half hour, or whatever they are looking for. This, this is very precise, and it ties right into our Trio software, so it's very compatible. We are able to do vacation times and submit things electronically versus a lot of paper stuff coming in. So there'll be a bit of a training session for everybody who uses it, but I've used it in Lisbon, where I was working, and it was very, very efficient. I could, would pull up and see who's going to be on vacation from different departments. You authorize those vacations for department heads to have that ability to, so it's on, it's on record.
Is this a, is this cost-saving or just efficiency-saving?
It's both. It's efficiency and cost savings. It's, if you've ever seen, if you ever worked with employees who have to punch a clock, you don't stand there and watch them because it's, it's on the system. And they sometimes squeak a quarter or an hour out, they'll punch in at specific times and just get a little bit more money. So, and it's a better record-keeping process and it'll take the people doing payroll less time, once they're up to snuff. And we're also looking to go, besides that, we're also making recommendations to go every other week payroll, which is a cost savings for us as well as time. So she's got a lot of good ideas. Patty's shaking her head. There is always a pushback on that from people, but...
That was going to be my question. So do you have to get agreement from labor for a new system like this?
No, not for this, no.
Not for this, but for weekly payroll, you probably would.
You just have to give a warning, right?
Yeah, we just have to tell them that the schedule's changing for payroll, that's all. We don't, it's, we can do that within our own management rights. We had a lot of pushback, and right now, we have probably less than 10 people who do direct deposit, and we want to make sure that that's, everybody does direct deposit.
Really? 10 people?
Yep, 10 people out of the whole organization.
I require it for my business. I don't like writing checks.
No.
If you, if you want to come work for me, you better have a bank account I can put that money in.
Well, it's just an old-fashioned way of thinking sometimes, and people like that paper check, and they go to the bank during their coffee break and they deposit it or cash it. And I used to have some in, in other towns I've worked in, that the public works people would race to the bank during their 10 o'clock coffee break, and their wives would be there directly after the coffee break, and they would hand the cash, and she never saw the stuff, or he never saw the stuff. So it's, it's just a old way of doing business, you know? But it's, it's...
I'll just put my two cents out, I'm not in favor of bi-weekly paychecks. Is, I, you know, people work for you, they should be paid weekly. That's my feeling personally, so...
I do kind of agree with that. I, I pay my employees weekly just because I know, you know, I used to work for bi-weekly paychecks, and it's just such a, I considered it a pain to be like, I gotta wait, you know, 10 days to get the next paycheck, not, you know, five days. It's just, it's never right around the corner when you need it, you know? But that's just the way that I used to live, so...
Of course you should manage your funding better.
Yeah.
Anticipate.
All right, well...
So that's what, that's what we're looking for, which is around $7,000. And we have a balance in our contingency of $49,157.50, so...
Have any legal fees coming up?
Don't we always?
Well, last, last year, we were way under on our legal fees. We budgeted, I think, $42,000, and I don't even think we spent 20, which was nice. And this year, we budgeted $40,000, a little bit less, but I don't anticipate any, we don't have any big deals going on at this point. We have the closing, once we finish up the cleanup, but that's a pretty small amount. We aren't using the lawyers for union contracts. I strictly go email back and forth with them, so I don't have to have them down here, and that's worked out real well so far. So we have good people in those unions and it works well.
Any further discussion? If not, as I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we allot, it's at $7,000. $7,000 from the contingency fund to be spent towards or applied to a new time management system.
Yep. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
I know we skipped over, I know we skipped over, but I caught it. We won't let that go. Is, we have the November 5, 2019 Town Referendum Warrant. Is, we voted on the articles last year. We do have one change, is Article 2. Is it, we voted on, is talked about buying the self-contained breathing apparatus, is that was, that was wrong, is Article 2, is, "Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 for the purpose of investment in the capital purchase and replacement of fire department apparatus and vehicles for fiscal year 2019, 2020, and place this amount in the fire department capital account established for this purpose, with any unspent balances to carry forward each year until fully expended?"
I'll explain. This was something that we, before we bought new trucks, you always were putting $50,000 in, and we used some of that funding to start paying down the bond. We haven't funded that for probably the last, since we bought the new trucks, and it's, funding is used to, if we have major work that needs to be done to one of our older trucks, or, and we save what we can and use it to purchase new if we have enough money. So Dennis and I talked about that, and he wanted to put that back in this year. I made the mistake and didn't put it on the warrant, and my fire chief made sure he reminded me, and so it's on there for this particular warrant.
So the SCBA's are...
That was already funded.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I thought that was in the budget that we passed in June.
That was already, yep.
So we need to vote on the new Article 2?
Yes.
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
So just note, when you sign this for me tonight, because I need it signed tonight, the new warrant will have the new article with the 4-0, yes vote recommendation.
Quick claim deeds and/or installment contracts. We have three quick claim deeds, is, let's see if I can get these mapped, U004, Lot 70. All right.
I think these were all in repurchase agreements?
Yes, these are ones that...
These are all, you're right.
Repurchase in this particular year that they paid off, or two years, gets them back on their rolls.
Right. So this is just a matter of if they...
It's a paper shuffle.
They, you know, have fulfilled their contract.
Right.
With the town, and, you know, so we're just, you know, putting it back. So first one is for MAP, U004, Lot 070. They have a motion to accept this quick claim deed?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? We have MAP, R015, Lot 002, 003.
I move we accept the quick claim deed as presented.
Second.
All those in favor? And then we have one with MAP, R071, Lot 009.
We accept the quick claim deed as presented as well.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Second public comment, is, second public comment, is please step to the microphone and give us your name, where you live, and let us know what you want to talk about. I have a feeling Rick Vandenberg wants to talk, since he came rushing in here at the end of the meeting.
Well, I was at the RecMaster planning meeting. I planned on coming earlier, but I just couldn't, couldn't finish that meeting. Rick Vandenberg, 51 East pasture road, Criteri Associates, so I'm wearing my Criteri Associates hat to come before you tonight, just to let you know that, and just to notice that we started our remediation work this week, well, actually last week, by, at the, at the Blue Sort building in the parking lot. Today, we started digging at the parking lot, and last week, we started cleaning some of the, some of the inside of the building out, making, kind of getting it ready for the asbestos contractor to be in there. There were, there, earlier in August, we did a select bid for the asbestos removal, the soil removal at Prime, and also for the floor repairs that need to go on inside the building. Renault Industries won the soil removal, they were the lowest responsive bidder. The lowest responsive bidder for the floor repairs is Kankakeh Landscape Construction, and the asbestos removal contractor is Pennile Environmental from New Hampshire. So those are the three entities that, for the next couple of months, will be working. We've got the, the soil removal work is, is the most pressing work. That's the work that's got to be finished up for Lot 133 by the end of September, and right now, we're on, we're on track to finish. So all things, keep fingers crossed that we don't have any bumps in the road, but we did find some slabs up there today, so there's some old, there's some old slabs in the car. I'm assuming, you know, there was some storage buildings there at one point, but I thought they were closer to, you know, further up from the intersection.
Well, there were, when I was a kid, there were all hoses there.
I was going to say, there were houses too, I think. I think that may be what we're looking at.
Wow.
Yeah, because there's a foundation drain next to a slab, so I'm assuming they just tilted in the, the walls and buried some of that stuff. So we'll have to, we'll have to remove some of those slabs so we can do our sampling, but I think, we're, we're on track, at least for, right now, so. Wanted to let you know that, and so we've asked the, we put some signage up and asked the folks who park and take the coast bus in the morning to park on the, on the Prime. The town manager was nice enough to get town folks to, or the DPW to, to clear that, to clear the brush away from that, to make that, that parking lot ready, and they moved some, they moved some jersey barriers so, so that, so that, that the main lot can be accessed. And so things, I think things are progressing, so I want to let you know that.
Any further questions for Rick?
No, thank you for your input.
Yeah, through, and through while this project is running, I'll, I'll try to come to most select meetings, in case you guys have questions.
And just so you know, we elected you as chairman of the Comprehensive Plan Committee, steering committee, so...
I hope not. I'm happy to serve, though.
Any other comments? Anything, Ken? We have no executive session and other business non-agenda items? Anything to bring up?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, everybody.